Good evening, welcome to Yorktown Central School District. Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for August 30th, 2021. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to contractual, employment history of particular individual and contractual negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for August 30th, 2021. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence for armed forces, especially for the troops who lost their lives last week in Afghanistan, and for those in the Yorktown community who have lost their loved ones, especially the father of Pam Chesser.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start with our first public comment, which is on agenda-related items, and nobody has signed up to speak, so we will move on. Before I read that, I want to just, per the Commissioner's determination issued pursuant to 10 New York C R R 2.6 last week, it requires any person over the age of two, including all students, personnel, teachers, administrators, contractors, and visitors, to wear a mask while in public buildings. The mask must completely cover your nose and mouth, and if you do not wear the mask, you will be asked to leave our meeting. Okay, we're going to move on to Superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see members of our audience and board, thank you so much for the opportunity to present. This evening, I just want to provide our school community with a reopening plan, just an update as to some of the steps that we're taking to ensure that our students are in school and to ensure that our students are safe and healthy and well while they're in our schools. You bet we can go to the, I can't see what slide you're on, so I'm going to just operate under the assumption that we're on Slide 2, Health and Safety. So, we have some goals that we're striving for and hoping to achieve. They're outlined here. Ultimately, we have 3,400 children in our district, we have 600 faculty and staff, or approximately 600 faculty and staff, and we want everyone in our school healthy, well, and coming back each day. And the protocols change, I think one thing we saw last year is that the protocols change quite often. They change without notice, and we hear them at the same time that the community will hear them. And what we're doing is we're looking at our practice, revising, pivoting as quickly as we can to make sure that we're adhering to what the requirements are and keeping our children safe. On the next slide, this was issued 5:37 PM on Friday in writing. We knew it was coming, the Governor had announced it, and this was the mandate on six, the following day at whatever time it was in the afternoon, there was a statement that clarified one of the six-feet items, and that was, that was issued shortly thereafter. With regard to the masks, the Governor's made it clear what the intent is and what the goal is with regard to masks. That's where we are right now. In sum and substance, what that distills down to is that masks are required indoors, there are times where the children are going to be having lunch, we're going to separate children six feet at that point. That has a lot to do with the quarantines, because a big goal here is to keep the children coming in day after day. So I'll speak about the quarantine in a moment. Masks are optional outdoors, required on school buses, that's not only a D O H piece, but that's a CDC order as well. And then there are medical exemptions. We understand that some children aren't able to tolerate a mask. We understand that there need to be some exemptions made. We'll have the child's physician submit a note to our school nurse. Our school nurse will then review the documentation with the medical director, and the doctor will make a determination from there. With, with regard, and just to come back to the mask rules, if you can be on the mask piece again, this really doesn't, I'm sensitive to some of the concerns on, from parents from whom I've heard. Some are concerned that all students should be required to wear a mask, and there should be no exemptions, and there's, even outdoors. And I understand that concern. There are some who believe that the masks don't have the efficacy that it's, were tended to have, irrespective of where you fall on that. We have a requirement, we're going to adhere to it. Over the summer, we had the opportunity to make masks optional. We took that opportunity, worked out for most of the summer. Unfortunately, for the last two weeks, some of our needed students were home. We don't have much information on what the exit strategy is at the state level for the mask policy, so we don't know the extent of this. We'll learn more as we go. On the next slide, the quarantine rules, I was encouraged to see this change made. The first bullet is similar to what we have grown accustomed to for quarantines, and it has increased from 10 minutes to 15 minutes, so any more time is helpful to keep children in school. It's the second bullet that is in the appendix of the definition of close contact that will enable our students to remain in school and not go out on quarantine. We had students who were quarantined multiple times each year, and that's just not good for anyone. That's not good for the child who needs to be in school, that's not good for families who are working. That is a huge disruption to learning. So, what this says, what the new mask policy, or quarantine policy says, is that if Mrs. Carbone and I are two students in a class, if I have COVID and I'm masked, because we're both masked, Mrs. Carbone gets to come back to school the next day and not have to face a quarantine. If either of us is, are unmasked, then the other would have to quarantine. So if I take my mask off, I have COVID, then everyone within a six-feet perimeter, irrespective of whether they have a mask on or not, will have to quarantine. So, as an illustrative example, you bet, this is that first slide with the dots, Slide 6. So if student desks are at this distance, in this example, and it's just illustrative, in this example, if this student comes down with COVID, this student has to quarantine. That's in an all-mask environment. So one student comes down with COVID, one student quarantines. Under the old quarantine rules, this is what we were facing in the way of quarantine, or if the student is unmasked. Is that the diagram with the several boxes, sir? Slide 8. That's who quarantines. So if the student, let's say the student here with the blue dot contracts COVID, does not have a mask on, all of those students quarantine, irrespective of whether they were wearing a mask or not. If they were wearing a mask, they still quarantine. Now, you take that through a middle school and a high school schedule, and you multiply that by seven classes, there are a lot of students who are going out on quarantine. On the next slide, this is going to enable us to maintain continuity of learning, and at this point, I think we all agree, we want our kids in school. I think we agree on that. On the next slide, I just want to share, I'm fairly confident, under the protocols and parameters we're putting in place, that quarantines will not result from in-class I, I'd like to even go out on a limb and say, we will not have quarantines. However, I won't do that, because I never seem to be surprised by some of the answers I get when I speak to the Department of Health and consult with them on whether quarantines are necessary. I will share with the community that I cannot make assurances on the school bus. I cannot promise you that the distancing will be there and that there won't be quarantines. We have cameras on most of our buses, we have different avenues that we're using, labeling the seats, numbering the rows. We're trying to address quarantines and minimize quarantines in that way, from the school bus perspective, but I cannot promise you, the school bus won't result in quarantines. There are some small groups and related services where the children will be in close proximity, those happen in small group instructional spaces, quarantines may result. Some athletic activities. What happens when we have a positive case is we reach out to the Department of Health, we explain the fact pattern to them, and defer to their advice and their guidance, because you'll know, we're not the quarantining agency, the Department of Health is. And we'll work with them, and I believe that athletic exposure will be limited, and quarantines will be limited. However, I have seen instances where they have told us that we have to quarantine an entire team. So I wouldn't assure you that there won't be quarantines. And then out of school, there are going to be exposures out of school, whether one member of a household comes home with COVID, and then your child is now quarantined as a result. I also want to share that vaccinated children and adults are not required to quarantine, provided that they remain asymptomatic, as well as somebody who tested positive for COVID in the last 90 days. So they haven't amended that. I keep checking to see if they have amended it from 90 days to 180 days, and the Department of Health had not, has not made that adjustment at this point. Next slide, you bet. Just some additional health and safety measures. I, I'm fond of these health and safety measures, because they're really not necessarily seen, they're happening, but they're not necessarily seen. So for example, we disinfect every instructional space every night, and we've been doing that for more than just last school year. We've had bad flu seasons, and we've made that adjustment, and we're going to continue with the daily disinfection of our instructional spaces. And you don't know it's happening until you come in the next day, and maybe there's a little film on the desk that didn't get removed that night. Or maybe some of the teacher's papers are a little crumbled, because they came in contact with the moisture from the solution. But those are happening at night, again, completely safe, completely effective for school setting. The ventilation is also extremely important in our school buildings. We're fortunate to have an excellent ventilation system. We have multiple sources of fresh air that are introduced to our school classrooms each day, and that's something that we're very proud of. So we have unit ventilators, we have an HVAC system, and certainly we have windows that can be opened, and we certainly will do that. The buses are disinfected, and I don't need to go through the entire slide, but I wanted to just share some of the strategies that we're taking. We have plenty of masks if anyone needs a new mask, or if a child needs a new mask throughout the course of the day. They don't have to wear them outside, so if the mask gets lost during lunch and during recess, we can certainly provide a new one. And we're going to try to get the kids outside. We set up a beautiful outdoor space for our high school. There are actually two courtyards in our high school. One is for lunch, where the children go out, and they really have enjoyed that space. And then there's another, more quiet setting where children go out there, and they'll read independently. And we have created outdoor spaces in all of our schools that are very well utilized. On the next slide, there are just some additional health and safety measures. There's talk about the vaccinations, not vaccinations, that's not something the district is going to wait in those waters. We're going to take our direction from the state, and obviously comply with any mandates that the state puts out. The district is not requiring vaccinations. We are going to be required to COVID test any unvaccinated employee or contractor every week. So people who are working in our school buildings will be required to have a COVID test weekly if they're unvaccinated. We have both a rapid antigen test on-site, and we have a saliva-based PCR test as well that we would partner through Westchester County, that's through a grant, and at no cost to the district. We're going to keep that COVID dashboard going on our website. It's transparent, it's honest, it will let you know exactly how many cases we've had, where they are, and you can see it over time. That state dashboard has been inaccurate from the first day that it happens, and you try to correct it, and you reach out, and there's never a response on how to correct any inaccuracies. You find out about a COVID case two weeks after the fact, or a month after the fact, and there's no mechanism to input historical data into the state dashboard. It has been inaccurate from the start. Our website is the most accurate source for information. We go in and post the information. We send the information up to the state, it doesn't always transfer into their website, and I have shared that with them very openly. We'd like to get back to field trips. We'd like to do that on a limited basis. The school bus honestly is the part that is a little concerning, and some of the venues, most of the venues that we would consider aren't very crowded, and then we're limiting large in-group events, in-building, indoor events at this time, so we're not going to have many of those moving forward. The easy screen, we're going to move away from at this time, that was a daily health attestation that we requested our family and staff, families and staff to complete. We're going to move away from it, because it wasn't a very good indicator of COVID in our school. So we look at the data, we see if the initiative, or if the approach, was beneficial in identifying COVID cases. It really was not, so why continue to, why continue using it? We're not going to have the daily health screening. Even the temperature checks at arrival had not really impacted the COVID circumstance, or it didn't really have much of an impact in terms of the identification of COVID cases, so we're going to remove that as well. At this time, and I think I should preface everything with "at this time," as the situation changes, our approach will change. And that's where I said on the first slide, we have to be prepared to adapt to a very fluid environment. Arrival and dismissal at our schools will follow a very similar procedure, so for our school community, as you dropped off children at whatever building, your children are enrolled, that process will look similar. Please be patient in our parking lots, please follow the traffic rules. If someone's directing traffic and asking you to go one way or the other way, please do adhere to them. We're all just trying to keep our campuses safe for each other and for the children, so please do adhere to the traffic patterns, traffic rules, traffic speeds in our parking lots. And we ask that you not arrive to our campuses too early. We have classes that go outside for lunch or for afternoon, many of our teachers are trying to get their students out more often, so there's just a little bit of a security concern, as we have cars start coming to our campus without an appointment, and we have children outside, and not a, not a really strong way to vet every single vehicle that arrives for dismissal. So we ask that you not arrive too early. The dismissal times were sent home by the principals at the, at each school, so that that should be in your inbox. If not, I would suggest that you reach out to the school principal for additional information on dismissal and arrival times. On the next slide, we're going to remove the signage in the corridors as well. We had six-foot markers and different markings on the grounds in the building. We're trying to get back more normal. That's the goal here. Yes, the children will be wearing masks, but the reality is, we're setting up a system that will have them in school every day, and removing some of the more overt indicators, the temperature scan as soon as you walk in, which really didn't prove to be very effective, and some of the other mechanisms that are a little more overt. Signage on the corridors, one. We're going to go with lockers at the middle school and high school, so we'll be using lockers again, middle school and high school. Our free lunch program, we're really excited about, that continues. That's not a Yorktown Central School District initiative, that is a K-12 USDA initiative for, actually, pre-K to 12 initiative. However, I've been alerted to supply chain concerns, so please check the menu frequently. If your children are anything like my children, they'll look at the menu and say, yes, I will eat that. And if something else is substituted in its place, that can be upsetting to a child, especially a child who has their heart set on having a specific menu item. So I would just ask that you be mindful of checking the menu often, more often than the first day of the month where you print it and just post it. The menus will change, and I've been alerted to that by our food service director. And we can go to the next slide. Our distancing academic classrooms, we're going to distance three feet, however, that's been an industry standard for us, is you have an aisle to walk through, that's at least two feet, and from, you put the students at the center of those desks, it's a three-foot distance. Even if you put the desks facing each other, it's more than a three-foot distance. There are spots for six feet, but we're not going to be using the barriers. I think you know, my feeling on the barriers from the very start was not very favorable. We purchased great barriers, they were terrific, we used some of the federal grant stimulus monies to purchase those, the barriers. They serve less good than they do in terms of restricting airflow, so the benefit really isn't worth the restricted airflow that's provided. So the student barriers will not be used. They won't be used in the cafeteria, because we're going to have the appropriate distancing, and they won't be used in the classroom. And that was the biggest concern that I heard from students, once they returned to in-person learning every day, were the barriers. Those were not, and any student, I see some students in the audience, any student will tell you that the barriers were not a very popular, nor were they an effective mitigation strategy. Next slide, you bet. After-school clubs are going to continue, and they're going to continue in person. There has been some talk about high-risk sports, and school districts canceling high-risk sports if all students were not vaccinated. Well, I'll tell you, is our students need athletics, our students need the arts, and we are not going to be canceling high-risk sports, nor will we be canceling the arts. They are such an invaluable portion, and an invaluable component of the overall learning experience for our children. So I have not seen a requirement on that at this point, I've seen recommendations, I understand the recommendations, I appreciate the recommendations, they're helpful. But I believe that, as we did last year, I believe that we can implement sports safely for our students. And it's about so much more than sports, it's about so much more than band, and orchestra, and dance, and theater. This is an important venue and an important outlet for our students, and I'm pleased that we will be able to provide this for our students. Thus far, we began the season a couple weeks back, things are going well on the athletic fields and in the gymnasiums, and we continue to employ some very stringent health and safety protocols, and will continue to do so. Back-to-school nights are going to be virtual, they'll be live, but they'll be virtual. Having 750 to 1,000 people in our schools sitting in close quarters is probably not the best step to advance our longer-term goal, which is to keep our faculty and staff in school, to keep your children in school. And also, we have a pretty substantial group of our community who are not comfortable coming back into our buildings. So just keeping our focus on the bigger picture of keeping our children in school, we're going to continue with a back-to-school night being virtual for this year. Most districts in the region are going that route as well, so I share that with you. I've consulted with my colleagues across the region, and that's been the approach that the vast overwhelming majority are taking. Next slide, you bet. There will be temporary quarantines. I'm hoping to minimize that. During classroom time, I'm hoping to eliminate quarantines, however, there will be quarantines that result. I shared with you four examples on one of the earlier slides. For temporary quarantines, we will provide virtual instruction for students. That is only in the event of a Department of Health ordered quarantine, or if the student contracts COVID, which is possible, it's absolutely possible. So we will have a platform in place where 612 students can participate, and K-5 will have a small portion of the day being synchronous, and then the rest of the day being asynchronous. We have some immunocompromised students. We're required to provide a remote option, and we will. If there is a concern for an immunocompromised child, please send the physician's paperwork over to your school nurse. School nurse, again, will review that with our medical director, and the doctor will make a determination after reviewing the paperwork. We have, we've made some investments, and what I want to share with our school community is, we know this is a difficult time. That's not lost on us. We know that there are some students who are nervous to come back into our schools. That's not lost on us. We know that there are some students who have burdens that they're carrying that we wouldn't wish on them ever. That's not lost on us either. We have taken a lot of steps, lots of steps, to support the social, emotional, and mental health of our students. That includes looking at existing programs that we offer, and techniques and strategies that we offer, to hiring additional staff and clinicians. And that's really important to us, is to support your children while they're in our schools. Our social workers and psychologists and I have been in close communication over the past couple weeks, and we have heard that the number-one thing for our kids is to be back in school. That's what we've heard, every day. We'll be here for them. We have people who are trained to have those conversations and to support our students. Our children, some have not come into a school building in 18 months. They were remote during the spring of 2020, elected to be remote for the 2020, 2021 school year, and now here we are, no remote option, and they're back into our schools. We understand that. We understand that there are some other concerns that students have, whether it's anxiety, whatever the concern is, from, whatever the source is, we're sensitive to that. In terms of some of the steps that we're going to take, it starts with staff, and it starts with people. So we have made, and there are some additions that we've made, we've also invested in reading support, and having additional reading support on staff to assist in any learning gaps that we're able to identify, although the data are showing promising. With regard to just a more comprehensive update on the next slide, I'll be posting a reopening plan to our website tomorrow. It outlines much of what I've discussed here in great detail. It adds a little more detail to some of the topics that I haven't necessarily discussed this evening. It's brief, I tried to keep it at an executive summary level, so I also included a frequently asked questions component to the reopening plan, because there are some questions that are coming up. One big question is, will there be snow days? The answer is yes, there will be snow days. Children need snow days. That's important. Now, if we have a very severe winter, and snow days threaten to take away scheduled school recesses, then, recess periods, then we will absolutely look at converting some snow days into instructional days, because we recognize that some families have plans, faculty and staff have plans, and if we have a virtual platform available to us, once we've exhausted our snow days, it's certainly a conversation that we will have. And then there are 15 or 16 other questions in that document that have come up more than once. With regard to key dates, opening day, we have our superintendent's conference day, and that superintendent's conference day is September 1st on Septem-
Sorry. You need a ma'am, you need to wear a mask in our building.
We got, no, we have one.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I just want to, I just want to, I need to, I need to, I'm sorry. Okay. First. Um. 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 Okay. First. Um.
I believe it was Tuesday of last week, and I shared much of the reopening. I added a little bit more this evening, but I shared much of the reopening plans. And there were about 149 questions and comments that came up that evening. I've tried to address as many as I can. I've tried to address as many as I can in the FAQ document that will be posted. It was hard to follow up with everyone, so for those who are viewing, there were not identifiable names in every circumstance. Some were generic with names, some were just initials, so it was difficult to follow up with every person who asked a question, but I hope that your questions are reflected in the FAQ document that will be posted to our website tomorrow morning. That concludes my report, so I turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? We're good? Okay. We're going to move on to board action items. Can I have a motion accept the board minutes from the July 12, 2021 meeting?
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Policies, we have a first read, a motion to approve the first read and adopt of the following policies. It's 8505 charging school meals.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have a first read on the following policies, 1230 public participation at board meetings and 1235 civility and decorum. Did anybody have any questions or concerns with any of them? Okay, so we can move them on. Personnel. Be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the payout of unused vacation days for employee 3452 upon retirement to a maximum of 20 days, and also be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes its board president to sign and approve the terms in agreement between the district and the employee number 4724 dated July 22, 2021, which shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent of following be approved. We have certified personnel, and we have, get down to the bottom of it, classified appointments. That's it.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Business officer, resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves a service renewal agreement with Converge One to provide remote managed service support for voice services in the amount of $24,500 for the 2021-22 school year.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to accept the following allowance dispersments and change orders from Jennings Company, Inc., and from ACS Systems Associates for the summer 21 district-wide improvements projects. They're listed below.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Nav Systems, a motion to approve the master services agreement and addendum number one with Nav Systems LLC to install 12 single-strand mode fiber optic cable between Yorktown High School and Services Building, which replaces the existing broken cable.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have a motion to, I want to just read the first paragraph. Whereas the Board of Education desires to piggyback off a contract with the Delaware, Shenango, Madison, Oswego Board of Cooperative Educational Services in accordance with general municipal law for the purchase and services in the nature of computer and electronic waste and disposal and recycling services, and it goes on.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby ratifies the action of the superintendent of schools in executing a service agreement and a property access agreement with Cablevision LightPath prior to board approval in order that LightPath can commence performing services to enable them to provide the district telecommunication services on or about September 1, 2021.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the QBE Student Accident Insurance Plan went nicer for the 2122 school year, the premium in the amount of $29,161. Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Resolve the Board of Education hereby appoints Dr. Eric Small as a school physician for the 2122 school year.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to adopt the policy statement for free and reduced meal prices for the 2122 school year to participate in the National School Lunch Program operating under the seamless summer option.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Whereas the Board of Education has previously established a tax cert reserve fund for the payment of tax refunds pursuant to orders and judgments in tax surcharge proceedings known as a tax surcharge reserve fund, be it resolved that the Board hereby appropriates and makes transfers from the tax cert reserve fund to the general fund in the amount of $15,743.88 for payment of the 2122 tax refunds.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the following tax cert resolution by order of the Supreme Court of the State of New York held in for the County of Westchester on the 20th day of July 21, a school tax refund in the amount of $15,743.88 is due to ACME Realty for the tax years of 2017, 18, 19, and 20.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to adopt the district's safety plan for the 2122 school year.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the lease agreement between Yorktown Central School District and 1010 Recreation LLC for space at French Hill School for the 2122 school year.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the 2122 Orange Ulster Bosse's Letter of Agreement for archival inactive storage for the climate-controlled storage of Yorktown Central School District inactive files at a rate not to exceed $549 per month.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the following, this is special education, a motion to approve the following placements as of August 30, 2021.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. At the Yorktown High School, $455.53 from the Yorktown Septa for the purchase of special education materials.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We're up to board comments. Cheryl.
I just wanted to comment on the reopening plan. I think we've done, you've done a wonderful job, Dr. Hatter and your team, in really ensuring that everyone comes back safely and prepared for, you know, different issues that may come up as far as sensitivity towards children who haven't been here and in almost 18 months. So I commend that and really looking forward to getting going again. It's exciting that we're at this point, and we'll be opening up to everyone. So welcome back to all of our students and our staff.
Freshman?
Yeah, welcome back to our staff, our students, and I hope everyone had a great summer, and as we look towards the fall, stay healthy, and welcome back.
Mike?
I can't add anything to that. Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back. One of the things I'm really excited about is when our high school students come back, they're going to come back to new bleachers on the athletic field and a new concession stand area, as well as a fully renovated gym, which we're squeaking by to get close to opening day. We may be a little bit late, but it's going to be beautiful, and I'm so excited for our students. They so deserve this opportunity, so I'm very excited. Ron, I thought your plan was extremely comprehensive. I'm excited that everybody's going to be back. I hope the staff is excited to be back. I know there was a, you know, you can hear it in the air that people are happy to come back, so it's grateful. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything? No? Okay, so we're going to start with our second public comment. I do want to read this before I start it. Our policy, 1230 public participation at board meetings clearly states that we do not allow discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will give up their right to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Our public comment session is 30 minutes in length. Each person has the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. At the end of the 30-minute period, the board, if it wishes, may make a motion to extend public comment. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. If you fail to conclude, but if you fail to abide by our three-minute warning, we will turn off the microphone. And lastly, please know the board does not engage in dialogue with the community during public comment session. Somebody has something on in the audience. I can hear some music or something. If they could turn that off, it's quite disturbing. Kelly Griffiths? Yes, and also you are commenting to the board, not to the audience. I didn't mean that to you, Kelly. Sorry.
Hello, I'm Kelly Griffiths, a rising freshman at YHS, and I've come, I've been to a bunch of these meetings, and there are always discussions of diversity in education, and I'm speaking here today because I really do believe in the potential of Yorktown schools. I've listened to countless PBIS assemblies during my time here, and I've heard esteem this and empathy that since elementary school. I've seen some truly inclusive and accepting communities form among staffs and students here, but I've also seen a kid get called the F slur in an ME SMS hallway. I've heard the R word thrown around in casual conversation so many times by Yorktown students that it's hard to believe that anybody taught them how harmful of a word it is. And not to mention the little girl in our community that was called the N word this year. As a school which boasts being the home of esteem and a place where empathy is held above all else, the fact that inclusion is taught in our curriculum should be a given because contentious phrases like DEI or the CRS framework are all just fancy words for making empathy a part of how we are taught. If empathy is the foundation on which we are taught about troubling parts of our world's past and present, then we will begin to learn about these topics in a way that uplifts groups of people that were previously ignored. I've gone through Yorktown schools for nine years, and the vast majority of the perspectives I've been presented by the curriculum have been white, neurotypical, cisgender, and heterosexual. And all we want is to do is to change that so that the kids who aren't any of those things also feel included and represented by our dedication. It's not meant to make your kid feel bad for being any of those things. If having any perspectives in your history books that aren't white, neurotypical, cisgender, and heterosexual makes you feel threatened, then maybe you have to look and ask why. Because how are we supposed to have empathy towards these types of people if you never learn a thing about them? Empathy always has to begin with a rich understanding of somebody's experiences, history, and hardships. That way, if you never ever have to experience what they're experiencing for yourself, you'll still be equipped with the kindness and respect to treat them. Oh, sorry. And so really, that's what it's about. This is an issue of empathy, and as a home of esteem, it's time that our schools start evaluating whether we are teaching every day using the same values that they tell us about during PBIS assemblies. Thank you.
We're not, we're not going to applaud.
Hi, Kimberly, Yorktown mom. DEI is all the rage. This anti-individual, anti-American rebranding of Marxism is now in our schools. School boards are buckling and afraid to act as in fear of being called racist. DEI in any form is race under new management. This framework will destroy our community from within, and using our children to execute it should be the first red flag. DEI is an equal opportunity. It is, it just destroys Martin Luther King's dream to not be judged by the color of our skin, but by the content of their character. It wants us to take blame for, unresponsibility for our ancestors. Who's going to be held responsible for the cross enslavement of African tribes? Every human life is sacred and belongs to themselves. If America is such a systemically racist country, and Yorktown a systemically racist town, why do we have some of the largest populations of immigrants than any other country in the world? There are more than 40 million legal immigrants that grace our country, and 25% of our American millionaires are Black, Hispanic, and Asian, just further proving that the American dream is alive and well and best of all, obtainable to all races. America is about equal opportunity, but not group equity. They are taking away our kids' rights as individuals to have separate goals and dreams and assigning grievances from one race to another. DEI shares that Black and whites with equal education cannot have similar outcomes. We don't even get the same outcome in our families. We're different. DEI is rejecting merit-based achievement in favor of this. It is time to stop this kind of talk. We need to go back to teaching our kids that hard work and fortitude are still important and to have faith in the individual and their endless possibilities. Our kids need to learn to set their own goals and strive for them. Not everyone can get a trophy, but how can we blame someone else for our lack of goals and dreams? You can't. DEI is teaching resentment, and worst of all, as you can see right in this room, pitting parents one against the other. They are, we're having our jobs called, we're being called racist out in public. Is this acceptable? It's going exactly against the opposite of what they're saying they're trying to prove. At the Lakeland Board of Ed, one of your staff members was urging the Board of Ed to not fall to influence from others that are less relevant than the students. Herein lays another issue. They are students, they are our children, and we as parents are very relevant. We're trying, the school has no right to take place or place these influences over our children. Trying to dismantle the nuclear family by taking power away from the parents is not right. We're not going away, and you need to stop implementing political beliefs on our kids. Thank you for your time.
No clapping, please. Trish Sullivan-Rothberg?
Good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll be very brief. I do not envy your jobs and your roles. I want to say you are doing an incredible job. You are tasked with something very difficult. We are now in this almost two years. There is a diverse range of how people feel about masks, curriculum, everything, and I am awed that you are able to wrap your heads around all of this and still educate our children. I just want to say thank you. I want to send you strength to continue doing what you do and doing it well in a time that there will be books written about, and that you are really in a tough position, and I wish parents would sometimes think about that. Putting yourself in someone else's shoes, it's not easy. None of you have easy jobs up there, and I am heartbroken by sometimes what I see you have to face. I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate your commitment to education, and thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I would like to echo what Trish just said. First of all, thank you all so much for the service to our community and to our students and your thoughtful approach to these very, very difficult times in many ways. I am here to speak in favor of diversity, equity, inclusion, the CRS framework as mandated by the state. I believe in having each child be comfortable and feel safe in their own schools, and I believe you, I think that's the goal that we all have. What I would like, and I know that this is not interactive, but I'd like to find out the best way for the community to keep updated on the CRS framework as it is being implemented in the Yorktown schools. What kind of measures are being taken to help mitigate some of the incidents that we've heard about where children were called names or other various things that we've heard from parents over these meetings? Just wondering, again, how we can keep updated on the good work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Hatter and members of the board. I am the chapter chair of Westchester County Moms for Liberty. I'm here to advocate for our children and parents on many concerning topics. Let me start with how disappointed I am many parents of the community are with the fiasco our first in-person meeting was. It was completely uncalled for to allow multiple speakers from outside the district to address a very controversial topic, including a comedian that was sent by Yorktown for Justice to mock parents that do not agree with DEI. I suggest that in the future, you allow taxpayer residents- I suggest that in the future, you allow taxpayer residents to the opportunity to speak first. We, the parents, came up here to speak. I know you're listening, but are you truly hearing what I'm saying? How can we advocate for our children and bridge the gap between the community, educators, and our schools? In the past year, I've watched a beautiful community become divided and our school district become submissive to only one side of the community's views. How can this happen? I would like to think it was done with good intentions. However, I am a bit skeptical. The problem is the lack of transparency within the district and the community. The lack of communication has set the tone for division. Again, I ask why the district did not notify the community with such information as a demand petition, the Equity Task Force, and the consulting firm or the simple fact that DEI was going to be taught in our district. I can only assume that this was done in the shadows to prevent conflicts between parents and students that would support the DEI narrative. This demand petition that includes systemic racism, police brutality, and privilege that is to be taught in ELA and social studies class is not appropriate. Ideologies are taught in the home. It is not the school's job to teach this. If DEI was so great, why is it causing such a great divide? Why are more families homeschooling, moving, attending private schools? Just like the districts pride themselves on teaching kindness, empathy, and respect for one another, when it comes to the children, they should practice what they preach. I no longer will tolerate any educator to belittle, intimidate, or bully my child. Respect is earned and not given, especially when actions speak louder than words. I would like to acknowledge that by calling out of the many members of this community that do not agree with me, where is your tolerance? Where is your respect for other people's opinions? When it comes to educators, because of their influential platform, they should be held to a higher standard as young, impressible children look up to them. So I ask you, if circumstances were on the opposite end, will you be so tolerable and accepting of this? In attending the last Board of Ed meeting in Lakeland, I heard some alarming statements. Racism exists in our community. It is an issue as one of the staff members can attest to because he was harassed and received death threats from speaking out. So I'm trying to figure out what is the reason behind me speaking out and receiving threats and being harassed. Let's put in perspective, if we are holding our students to a higher standard, why are we not holding our educators to one as well? Especially when one uses his educational platform to address his personal agenda. We teach our children to think because they put anything out on social media and they do not need to be accountable for what they put out there. This is quite simple for the grass. Why not simply?
I'm going to ask the board, we had a sign-up sheet out front. We had two names on a list that came in app. Do you want to allow them to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Carmella Provizi? I'm going to ask that we make sure that the mask covers our nose and mouth while we're talking, please.
She's in Lakeland. So.
Want you to clarify that?
Hi. Just want to clar, I'm sorry, I'm not going to start your time yet. Just want to clarify, public comment, we are not allowed, we've been told by our attorneys, we are not allowed to make a determination of residency or non-residency. We have a public comment, the public is allowed to comment regardless. Thank you. So we're starting? Okay. Let me also address the mask mandates. I realize that our governor and CDC say that the mask needs to be worn inside. However, what about the last couple of months? Parents should have the right to choose whether or not they want their child to be masked up as it is restricted to their breathing and is causing problems socially and emotionally. We need leaders that are going to protect our children and advocate for us. Some districts in New York are doing just this. Here is a compromise. How about letting the children take off their mask at their desk, almost like when we go to a restaurant and sit at a table, we take off our mask, we eat, we talk. The thought of my child wearing a mask and not being able to advocate for them is disheartening. Masks are a form of abuse. The new guidelines came out with reference to sports and COVID vaccines. So if you're vaccinated, you could come into contact with someone that has COVID, you do not have to yet quarantine, yet you can still spread and get COVID yourself. There is absolutely no logic in this. However, now we seem to be separating children by vaccinated and non-vaccinated. Wow, another tool to divide us. So we're pointing each other against each other and it's causing a lot of problems. Let us remind one another why America is so great, home of the free because of the brave. The American dream is attainable by all through hard work and perseverance. Between the DEI mask mandates, possible COVID mandates, and our diminished parents' right, I stand here to make you aware that until these issues are addressed in transparency, accountability, and respect, our mutual parents will continue to advocate for our children. Moms for Liberty was formed on a national level to empower parents and we have started a chapter here in Westchester. We are strong, fierce, and motivated and no longer silent. According to the Yorktown contract between the Board of Education, Yorktown School District, and the Yorktown Federation of Teachers, Article 15 says, "Professional Behavior." The Board recognizes that the Code of Ethics of the education profession is considered by the Federation and its membership to divine acceptable criteria of professional behavior and that the Federation may deal with ethical problems in accordance to the terms of such Code of Ethics. It also states, "Academic Freedom." Article 6A, "The parties seek to educate young people in the democratic tradition to foster a recognition of individual freedom and social responsibility to inspire meaningful awareness and respect for the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the laws of the land to instill appreciation of the values of individual personality. It is recognized that these democratic values can best be transmitted in the atmosphere which is free from censorship and artificial restraints upon free inquiry and learning and in which academic freedom from teachers and students are encouraged."
10 seconds.
Academic freedom shall be guaranteed to teachers and no special limitation should be placed upon studying, investigating, presenting, and interpreting facts and ideas concerning man, human society.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I came in late. My first question is, why are kids wearing masks? What are we protecting them from? We know that they don't need vaccines and they don't need masks. Children have a 99.9999% chance of surviving and doing just well. So I'm presuming it's to protect the teachers. So what onus do we put on the teachers? Teachers also have a very high survival rate if they're not obese, if they're not old, if they don't have comorbidities. So do we going to remove fat teachers, old teachers, and diabetic teachers from class, which we should because we know that the students are psychologically damaged and their IQs are going down? Now, this is the second meeting I went to. The first meeting I went to, you opened it, Dr. Hatter, and I found your opening comments to be rather intellectually dishonest and disingenuous and I personally found them as an insult to my intelligence. We know that critical race theory and diversity inclusion are just two heads of the same hydra and we know what this is about. It's a Marxist indoctrination that I saw on display here. Now, you are allowing a violent hate group to get a foothold into our school and we know it, we see it, and you're in charge. The buck stops with you and we're going to hold you responsible. The fish rots from the head.
Yeah. Woo!
Thank you. That's everybody who signed up to speak.
I'm sorry, I came in late. May I speak a moment?
This will be the only person. Two people? Then that's it.
No, let's stop. We're not going to speak.
Because if you looked at our agenda, it said, okay, it said 6:55, we stop signups.
All right, so we should walk over to the conference.
No, no, we'll allow you to speak, but please keep your mask on. State your name, please.
I apologize, I was late. My name is Tom Maron. I'm a parent in this district.
Okay.
I'm a volunteer youth leader in our town and I've been an educator for about 30 years now. I want to tell you I'm in favor of our district's efforts to include the concepts of diversity, equity, and inclusion in the education of our students. I want to applaud the good work of our teachers, our administration, I'm sorry, our teachers, our administration, and our school board for promoting and insisting upon the education that includes all the history of our great nation. If we aren't going to teach all of the history, especially the parts that hurt, why teach any of it? Secondly, let me take a moment to address masks. We all know that wearing a mask is an effort to slow or even stop the spread of a deadly plague. I thank you as our elected board for mandating the wearing of masks throughout our districts as a measure of safety. We all recognize the need for seat belts and other safety measures. This is no different. Vaccination is key and in lieu of that, we can all accept the wearing of masks as a useful preventative measure to keep our children safe. In closing, thank you, Board, for stepping up and doing all that you do, especially now in these trying times. Thank you for sticking with it and putting up with a ridiculous vitriol from a small, loud, and anti-intellectual faction that would seek to bully you away from promoting the best education of which we are capable. Thank you very much.
Please just state your name also.
Sure. Beth. Hi, my name's Katie Schmidt-Fader. I'm a parent here in the district. I also wanted to say thank you all so much for everything that you're doing up here. We've been very impressed with the way everyone has handled the pandemic and very grateful. I know it hasn't been easy. I just have a son who graduated last year and has had his first day of college today and it was hard, but we've been very, very, our family's been very grateful for all you've done. I do apologize for being late and missing the sign up, but I did feel like it was important for me to speak because I was away during the last meeting and say how important it is for my family and how grateful we are that you are pursuing DEI initiatives. You know, I've learned so much, so much history over the last 10 years that I never knew, that I never had been educated about, and it has had me, has helped me have greater empathy, greater understanding. And I feel for my children when they learn that history, it empowers them. It doesn't shame them, it doesn't denigrate them. In fact, it empowers them to make strong choices that will hopefully make our future better. I hate the thought of any child being in this district and not feeling accepted, not feeling comfortable, and not being given the opportunities to succeed. So I'm grateful that you are pursuing these initiatives. I do believe the majority of those of us in this district very much do support it and we're grateful. And I'm also grateful for the mask mandate because, well, it's very simple, children under 12 cannot be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is that? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Thank you all for coming out tonight.